Capron?
Here.
Redkin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Gott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Could we stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry.
Brad Heiner? Brad Heiner here from R. Louis. Hey.
Maybe not.
We'll go with you. You can get out of here if you need to come back here. It's okay. We have a warehouse recommendation that says the owner of Parker, a recent 2019 graduate of East High School, has competed in track and field for all of her life. She continued her track career in high school where she competed in the Sioux City Relays, placing fourth in the hundred meter in 2019. In the Iowa State High School track team where she qualified for multiple relays and placed sixth in the state for sprint mentally. And whereas long with her track career, Mira has been an active in her community, serving as a Sioux City Young Ambassador, member of the youth commission, fundraising for building and involving her in ready to set school programs. Whereas due for her community and track achievements, Mira was invited to participate in the 2019 Down Under International Games hosted on the Gold Coast of Australia in July of this year. At the Down Under Sports Tournament, Mira competed against over 200 athletes from the U.S.-Australia Museum. Whereas Mira was an outstanding ambassador for the Sioux City, the state of Iowa and the United States of America, now therefore I Robbie Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, may have the city council, hereby command, may I honor Parker, along with her coaches and family, for this amazing accomplishment. Mira should be proud of her achievements and commit knowledge and support in track and field of her community. Thank you.
I would just like to thank everyone for being here, you know. I would like to thank my family and friends who helped support me through all the years of track and field and helping me get to Australia and for everything I do. Thank you.
Good for you. Thank you.
All right. We will go to interviews for the Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustment, Eric Coleman. Eric, stand up there and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Well, I'm from the Chicago area originally. Went to Iowa State. Met my wife. She's from Sioux City. We moved back here when I graduated. I've worked with CNBA architects since 2014. I just got my license in January of this year. And I feel my calling has been to use my education to help further the development of the built world for all of us. And my wife and I plan on sticking around in Sioux City for a while, and what better place to invest my education and talents into the town I'm living in.
Questions?
Thanks for making the application.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Who, how did you find out about it, may I ask?
Brian Crichton, our CEO, had asked if anyone in our firm was interested in doing this. And then one of my mentors, Lee Buchman, was on it.
Sure.
He's kind of pushed me, poked me, and said, hey, you should do this.
Good for you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Rhonda Robinson? Robson? Same thing. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
All right. So I'm Rhonda Robson, and I work at the Norm White.
Good name.
I know, it is, isn't it? Yeah.
Strike one.
You got a vote already.
Currently, I work at the Norm White Senior YMCA as their CEO. And I've been in Sioux City now for a little, almost a year and a half. I came from Newton, Iowa, where I served on the Planning and Zoning Commission there as well. And so really, I just wanted to get more involved again in my community that I'm serving here in Sioux City. And so really, that I thought you already, that was something I've done in the past. It was something that was available and open, and so I wanted to fulfill that need as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions?
How many openings do we have?
There are two openings. This board is gender balanced. So... Right now, it would have to be either one male and one female or two females to require it balanced.
Thank you. We'll let you know.
Thanks. Yep, you bet.
Yes. Thank you very much. Next, we'll go to the Consent Agenda. You can consider items three through 10C to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes requested by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, please come up as I read it. State your name and address for the record. If you want to speak on an item not under the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns against. Please state your name and address. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is a reading of the city council minutes of July 12, 15, 16, 2019. Four is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment actions. Five are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to the total construction services for the roof replacement at the Long Lines Family Rec Center. Is there a reason nobody local bid on that stand? Just out of curiosity, is that that type of job?
In the FA facilities maintenance supervisor. I believe it was the wrong time of year to be bidding this, but it was sort of an emergency repair, so that's why we had to go ahead and do it.
All right. B is a resolution approving change order number two to the contract with HydroClean for the digester cleaning and inspection project. C is a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement with IDOT for the segment two of the I-29 reconstruction project. D is a resolution approving a contract with Sioux City Engineering for the emergency Floyd Boulevard sanitary sewer interceptor project.
I had something just with that. And I've noticed it before. It's maybe it's just Bob for your, for you. But sometimes when I look through these, these contracts are so illiterate.
Like you just can't read or look at the details?
I don't know if there's a way to scan it in better. I just noticed them with, I've noticed it in the past and haven't said anything, but especially with this one. I mean, if you go to the online copy, it's just completely illiterate.
Okay.
So just figuring out a better way of scanning or letting us know or, I would appreciate it. I just noticed, especially with that one, that I couldn't even read a line.
Sure. F is a resolution approving an amendment to number one. I'm sorry. E is a resolution approving a license for bicycle path pedestrian walkway with the BNSF Railway for the corridor connecting the Lewis and Clark Trail. I only wish that the railroad that Mr. Buffett owns would be as good a partner as Mid-America is in these projects. It's unthinkable to me that they would charge $3,700 for a license fee when they ought to be worried about quality of life and attracting employees like the rest of us are. That certainly doesn't speak very well for them, but anybody that follows these meetings know I have some issues with them, so we'll just move on today and keep, keep rolling. F is a resolution approving an amendment number one to the consulting services agreement with DGR Engineering.
Can, yeah. Go ahead, Alex. You first.
Well, I was going to talk to Dave or Gordon, either one about this. I called and talked to Dave earlier, but Gordon, it's my understanding that the extension of these consulting, this consulting agreement is due to the amount of days, us being so far over. It's also my understanding that the damages that we're looking at opposing for going so far over would then cover this cost. Is that correct?
Gordon Fair, City Engineer. Yes, that is correct on both counts.
I think I'm just, I think I speak for a lot of people that live in Morningside and the general public that it's extraordinarily frustrating that Morningside Avenue has been closed this long and this project's been taking this long. And then you look at this to be approving another $142,000 towards this project. I just want to make sure we get it back with liquidated damages.
That is our intention, yes.
And I guess my question is, and maybe this is way out of my understanding of what we're doing, but if the project was supposed to take 22 weeks and it took 45 weeks and liquidated damages are already at $163,000. And this amendment is for additional construction administration, observation time, and additional material testing required to complete the project. If the contractor is responsible for the delay, why wouldn't he be paying all of these? And why is it the city is incumbent upon paying because they're late? I don't understand that. Maybe I'm thinking way out of whack.
No, that is correct. I mean, normally, and that's how we, we recruit those losses through the.
Liquidated damages? But why wouldn't he be, essentially, we're paying the liquidated damages for him?
Because the contract is with, DGR is with the city, not with him.
Because you can only collect liquidated damages technically to the extent of your damages. So if you don't owe this to DGR, you don't have a case of collecting against the contractor.
But shouldn't there be a clause in the original contract, if there isn't already, that if the contractors are responsible for the delay and we have to approve additional funding, that it would be his responsibility to either?
For not approving it because he's paying us back 169 of the 144 or whatever.
Yeah, but that's just for being late. Now we have to add 140.
The state of Iowa is pretty clear on this. If you don't have damages, you can't collect. We've tried it around here.
Oh, okay. I'm not, I wasn't aware of that.
You won't win the, you just can't put damages on it just to go collect money. You have to have, that's why it says damages. That's why last week I asked, we know the days are $4,000. Why wouldn't we have put $4,000 worth of liquidated damages?
Yeah.
Would have been cheaper, maybe, because they might have got it done faster if it was 4,000 rather than 1,000.
Well, it just, I wasn't aware that there were state law that prohibited us from doing that, but logic just seems to.
I agree. And that's why I called, is because I was frustrated that we were having to pay this, but obviously then.
They can, yeah. They can take twice the time it takes, and then we have to add additional resources to complete the project, but yet we're the ones paying for it.
Upfront, yes.
Yes.
Until.
Well, you've deducted 160 something. You'd get the liquidated damages anyway, otherwise. I mean, right?
Well, we have to prove that we were damaged.
Well, I trust.
Well, if, if they're over.
I trust you have if you charged them.
That's what's in contract too. That's part of it. And we also, we have extra.
Yeah, I just, it just didn't seem right to me.
You know, my whole thought then is if this contractor is this late on the job, it would seem to me that he's got a better job, that he's taking care of and letting us go, and he knows that he's still going to make more money.
He probably had one that paid him $15,000.
Exactly.
A day reward for getting done early.
Exactly.
They have those state level. But we've never wanted to pay rewards for going faster either, so.
Well, thank you. My, my, I just trying to apply a little logic, but it didn't work.
And you consulted with that contractor and they're not disputing the campus?
Not at this time, no. I met with them back in January and told them I was very concerned about their progress.
Okay. Well, we'll see if it sticks. So. G is a resolution approving a work order number 40 with RSNH Iowa for the airfield improvements at the Sioux Gateway Airport. Six are actions relating to property. A is a resolution granting a permit to FibroCom to maintain underground cable near the intersection of Third and Jennings. B is a resolution accepting a deed from the United States of America and dedicating property at 6200 Harbor Drive as part of the South Ridge Drive, Bridge Drive. C is a resolution inviting proposals for land in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of the United States of America and scheduled a hearing. D is a resolution proposing to sell property at 1203 Ruston Street. The petitioner is Bernard Beamer. Seven are appointments to boards and commissions and committees. A is a motion appointing Lawrence Christensen to the Airport Board of Trustees. B is a motion appointing Joseph Cruz to the Airport Board of Trustees. C is a motion reappointing Amy McFarland to the Historic Preservation Commission. Eight are purchasing. A is a resolution amending the purchase order with Bright Technologies for a belt, filter, press for the water treatment. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order in Nebraska Salt and Grain for rock salt.
I had a question about that one.
Yeah. Don't use any more than you have to, Ed.
Yeah.
Yeah. You don't have to pour it on like you did last year, Ed, now that these prices.
I understand. I think I probably asked it last year, the exact same question, but with these prices continually to increase, especially this year, looking at what they're saying is cost for their materials and their transportation. Have we looked into any other solutions? Are there any other solutions that cities are using other than this type of rock salt that we're aware of? Have we ever looked into those options?
Ed Pickens, Sioux City Street Superintendent. The costs come from, everything went up with transportation from the trucking lines to the railroad lines, BN, Burlington Northern. They added a fuel surcharge. The union dues at the salt plants. The wages went up there, and it was just a bad winter. It's kind of the hangover from last winter. They truck it up, they rail it up, they're both costing more this year.
They rail, rail that to you?
Yeah, they rail it to, on 18th Street, down by.
Red Cummings there?
Yeah. And then they truck it over to us. And it was a sweet deal last year. It's just with the bad winter, now we're, now we're picking apart.
My question was just more of if we've ever looked into alternatives, alternatives for deicing.
Well, the company that we're getting this from, they sell something that's called the slicer. It's an ice slicer, and that's like 180 to 185 a ton. So, and that's got some calcium chloride in it. It's pretty expensive. When you, when you consider that salt, you know, it works pretty good, so.
Just want to make sure we're proactive in looking into alternatives. I mean, I know there are some other cities that are maybe using other products, other things, and just want to make sure we're not continuing to go back to this if that cost is going to continue to increase. You know what I mean?
I haven't seen it this high in over five years. I mean, not even close.
This is probably from the rough winter then?
I'm hoping it's going back down next year.
Yeah.
Means we have a mild winter.
C is a resolution awarding a purchase order for the, to the Thomas Bus Sales for one gasoline bus for the transit system. Nine are applications for beer and liquor licenses. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Ten is receipt of minutes. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any items three through 10. Seeing none, we will vote. Pass is five zero. Eleven's a hearing and ordinance rezoning 2321 41st Street. Petitioners Lieber Land Holdings deferred from July 8, 2019. Staff recommends a motion to delete this item. You're recommending that. Does Lieber send you a letter to that effect?
Yes. Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. As the report states, staff has continued to work with the developer, Rod Lieber, on both items 11 and 12, the rezoning and the preliminary plat at 2321 41st Street. We've continued to pass along the neighborhood concerns that have come along in since the last meeting as well with the developer. And at this time, in an attempt to address concerns brought up during those meetings and concerns brought up with correspondence received from the neighborhood and from various citizens, the developer has requested to delete the item and bring it back at a later date as he has additional time to review the site.
Jeff, did they ever get together, the both sides?
We did not. I sent an email correspondence to two of the spokespersons that are in the audience here that we've communicated with, that when he brings back new plans at that time, we will hold a community meeting before any planning and zoning action or city council action. The two-week deferral just was not enough time for the developer to put together any type of revised plans to address those concerns. And so we made the decision that the community meeting would be held before the next set of plans even comes for approval.
I would suggest you have that at North Middle School, even though I'm sure the rent will be rather costly, at least that way we'll have the opportunity to have the neighbors all up there know about it.
Understood.
Anyone to be heard is going to be deleted unless somebody wants to speak in favor. I thought I did. I'll move it, move the deletion.
Second it.
Redkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Gott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Twelve is a motion.
Thanks, Jeff.
Approving the preliminary plat of Lieber Heights. Petitioners Lieber Land Holdings deferred from July 2019. Staff recommends a motion to delete. I'll move that.
Okay. Moore?
Aye.
Gott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Redkin?
Aye.
Thirteen's a hearing and ordinance rezoning 4700 41st Street, Petitionery Icky Nickel Bar and Grill. PNZ recommends approval. I'll move that.
Second.
The hearing is now open. Anyone like to speak for or against this ordinance, please come forward after we get a report from the PNZ.
Jason Gary, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, heard this item at our last meeting and had some discussion with the owner. Talked about facilities, and staff has had some updates on that where they've gone out and checked some of the restroom and shower facilities that would meet the expectations we have in the code. But we heard the item, and it made sense, and so we passed the rezoning unanimously.
Anyone to be heard?
You said they did go out, right?
Yeah, so there were, there were two conditions. I think it was two conditions that we had that, that the owner expressed in the meeting that he believed one of, that the shower facilities and restroom facilities would, that he has on site already would be okay. Staff have confirmed that to me, that they have gone out and checked, and that, that is satisfactory. And so that condition is met.
The other, the other condition was the dump site, right? Or the?
Yeah, and that was something that was going to be solved pretty quickly. So I don't, I didn't get a confirmation that it was done, but the owner at the time said it was not going to be a problem to add a little bit more of a formal dumping site onto the, onto the property.
Because my understanding was that in the, at least in reading it, that that was recommended or needed before the event, right?
Yeah. We want to be able to, we wanted to be able to formalize a process where they've got good access to dumping facilities on there, but that essentially we, but it was an item that could be pretty quickly addressed, and so there wasn't a ton of concern by planning and zoning that it could be addressed relatively quickly. It just hadn't been confirmed at the time of the meeting.
Yeah. And that's fine. And then the driveway, it sounds like that will take a little more time.
Yeah, well, since there's cost involved, we tied that more to as there's addition, if there's additional expansion, things of that nature, then we would, that's something that couldn't be solved in two weeks, and that involves more cost. And so we, but if they're going to be further development or expansion, that they understand that that cost is going to be saddled on to that, that process.
So then it's my understanding then that you aren't going to have them pave the driveway necessarily unless there's expansion. Is that what you're saying?
That's my understanding. If I'm wrong, staff can go ahead and correct me, but that I think our intention was is that, listen, if you're going to expand parking in the near future, or you're going to make some changes to your parking, you need to go through process and put concrete down, just like every other development would have had to have done.
I'm reading that. I'm.
If I'm wrong.
Well, I'm thinking the motion, at least the second I made incorporates the two of the three conditions.
Yeah.
Plan and zoning recommend.
Yeah, if you're taking our motion, you're just, yeah, you're doing that, and we've already confirmed at least one of those that we didn't have at the time is done, for sure.
Anyone to be heard?
Michael Vazani, I'm the owner of 4700 41st Street. And yes, we are working. The bathrooms are done, the showers are done, the dump station we can add, and we are going to that. We only have a few events, but it does take time to get that set up and get it in. It's, you know, we use it, like I said, maybe three times a year. And it's mainly for tents where they just use the facilities anyway. The campers, in all honesty, they, they're staying there and they have holding tanks and they go out. It's not like we're going to make this a permanent, it's still a driving range. It's just something we want to do for like RagBri and the big events where we can get people in there. And that's what we're, you know, trying to get it just to get more people in town to see the place.
And I hope you understand, I was just asking for clarification.
And we will.
I'm not saying you have to push it or something like that.
Yeah, we're going to try to get one in here in the next couple of months, just a tank so we can do it. I just want to go through, see what we need. And then I'll talk with Jeff about what we actually need for it. Jeff Hanson.
Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for working with staff too. Appreciate it.
Hearing's closed.
I can't help but make this comment. I should learn to shut up, but it's never been my strong suit. But, you know, the problem with Facebook and other mediums is that you get lit up around here. I hope you found our staff easy to work with. Same way with Mr. Lieber's. It's like city council doesn't listen to anything. And I got to tell you, that is somewhat irritating to me because not from you, the owner was from.
I think you did a great job.
From your guy, from, but, but people should give us at least the benefit of the doubt to at least hear it before they make assumptions of where we're at on something, is what I'm trying to say.
When I tried making that point at the last meeting, you know what I mean? That I thought if you can take to Facebook and different social media and say how great of an experience it was, because I made the mistake of then after the meeting, going back through the comments that were on your page. And when I'm seeing things like, F off, city council, tell them to go F, you know what I mean?
That wasn't, I mean, that wasn't.
It's not, it's not, it's not you. I know. But what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is it's just, it's your supporters.
I totally understand.
And that's just frustrating because then, then staff bends over backwards to work with you, and then we read that. It's like, I know it's not you.
It wasn't me.
I know. We know that.
But I agree with the mayor.
And here's the other side of it. There's haters out there that aren't going to be happy about nothing.
Yes, they are.
You know, so I don't even pay any attention to them anymore because, hey, I know what we're doing up here is the right thing to do, and, and you knew right away that we thought that it was the right thing to do because we jumped on it right away. So shame on those people out there. They ought to point their finger back at themselves instead of, you know, pointing it at us.
All right. Fourteen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications in Milwaukee. What? I voted. We didn't vote?
Second.
Well, do you have?
All readings.
You don't have three times on them. So I'll, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? Sorry. Hold on, the agenda you guys give me.
Keeping it interesting.
That part got cut off.
Is there anybody that's opposed to waive the statute? I'll move that waiver rule.
Gott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Redkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Pass is five zero. Fourteen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications for Milwaukee Railroad Shops Roundhouse in Hansbun. I'll move that. I'll move that.
Second.
Anyone to be heard? The hearing is open. Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Dave, I'm going to say that you and I have talked about this for a long time, so if you'll just continue to talk to Dakin about this. I really, really, this is, projects like this going out to the Milwaukee Railroad Shops and things like that are why I really want to have a bike lane or make it more bike friendly to go up Riverside to be able to get to these things. Because then you have the railroad shop, you have Dorothy Pico Nature Center, you have Military Road where you could cut over or you even have Stone State Park where you could go biking. I think it makes a good sense if we're going to revamp this to make it more accessible. So if I'm biking from out of town, going and then hopping on there, you know what I mean? I know we've talked about that and I know there are some drawbacks or that it's going to be a more complicated project than one large bike lane. I get that, but I just hope we continue to think about that when we're doing that project, if it's possible. Thank you.
Passes five zero. Hearing and resolution of proposing the, proving the proposal to sell property near 2002 Nebraska Street. Petitioners of Sioux City Community School District. We need a motion. I'll move it.
I'll second it.
The hearing is now open. Anyone who want to be heard? Get those cameras rolling. We don't get somebody like this in our chambers.
Good evening. Dr. Paul Gosman, Superintendent of Schools. I just thought it would be appropriate to come this evening and thank you. I realize I'm thanking you before you voted and, and that you have a decision to make on this item. But you know Sioux City passed the local option sales tax for new school construction back in 98 and that lasted 10 years and you were great partners with us as we built three new middle schools. And from 2008 until today, it's been a statewide initiative and this represents the last of the sales tax money that we had available to us from 2008 until 2029 and as we worked to replace schools. And separate from those middle schools, your staff, the council has worked with us and sometimes it weren't very comfortable as we build over a dozen school facilities where in the past we'd build a new school every 11 blocks and on less than an acre of property and today, for good reason, we have to have somewhere in the neighborhood of five to 10 acres to make that happen. And so I know that this has been a destructive process, but I think you'll agree with me that it's been a good process for our community to have the new facilities and I know it's been a challenge for you. I haven't seen anybody complain about anybody on social media ever, so I don't know what you were talking about with that. That's never happened to me. But, but I just appreciate the help that you have been as a council and that the staff at the city have been to our district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you. Anyone else be heard? The hearing is now closed.
I need to abstain on this conflict of interest.
It passes three zero, three one one. I vote no. Mr. Moore abstains. I'm not opposed to new schools. I actively, if you remember, campaigned to make sure that they got that 1% sales tax, but to me it's, if I have to pay for an alley, then everybody should have to pay for an alley and I just don't think it's fair, so. Sixteen's a resolution approving a contract with LP Building Services for custodial and maintenance services for the Skywalk system. I will move that.
Second.
Dave Carney, Public Works Director. Just want to address that it's a significant increase over what we are currently paying, but fortunately that's the bids that were submitted. I know we contacted over 18 different companies and only received three bids, so.
How many properties connected to the Skywalk? Just out of curiosity.
Twenty-seven.
Does he each pay 2580?
Uh, no, there's a, there's a formula which goes into how they pay with frontage and traffic count and I think counts and all that. Basically, if we look at, we looked at July's billing and we've seen several that would go up anywhere around $200, I think was the, one of the heavier ones we saw. Well, I shouldn't say that because there's the, the Howard Johnson Hotel will go up almost $1,000 monthly bill.
But will the total cover the cost?
Yes.
Of the contract?
Well, our costs will increase as well.
Yeah, we, we cover 40% of the cost and then there's a, there's actually a subsidy on top of that that will go from 12% to 13%.
Part of doing business, isn't it, Dave?
Unfortunately, yes.
Shut them down.
No, I don't want to shut them down.
The contractor did talk to us about some potential cost savings measures which we could address after where, but would be a reduction in services. But what we're actually getting today, we're not clearly, we're not getting the services that we contracted for from Fresh Start anyway, so it would still be an upgrade over what they're providing.
Mr. Padmore, I have a question. How many properties do we have that are similar to the Skywalk where we pay a service for someone to come in and clean? Do you know?
I'm not aware of.
Martin Luther King, I think, don't they?
No, we have city staff for that. Skywalk's unique in that it's, since it's public right of way through private buildings and that cost is paid for by those properties. I'm not aware of a janitorial service being provided elsewhere in the city.
Because we do like this building in-house.
Yes.
That's a huge increase. You know what I mean? And Dave, I know you and I talked at length about this.
Well, we talked about it internally, whether we, whether we could hire staff to do it and it was staff on top of buying all the supplies that was.
And equipment and everything else. And I mean, to catch you up, so my train of thought was after our conversation was, well, how many other properties could we be using that equipment? You know what I mean? Like if we are contracting out to clean multiple spaces, well, if we did have our own staff and then bought the equipment, would it be a cost savings if we said, well, now we have the staff and we have the equipment, let's have them do all of those and do away with those contracts. But if we're just doing it in-house, you know what I mean, and not having multiple contracts or a different company, then I mean, I understand it doesn't make sense, but it was just another avenue that I was trying to think of of how could we not have this substantial increase without going to the mayor's point.
I'm shutting it down.
I'm shutting it down.
Still want to hit. Laughed at me when I said the basketball courts and the convention center. Now we got two big buildings like that, so I wasn't as far up on that one as you guys were either. Let that go to the.
I don't know about that.
Part of the good customer service that we're striving for.
Do you, does a contractor require a certain number of personnel from the contractor to?
No.
There's a lot of daily maintenance that, I'm wondering how one person does all that, but.
They, they don't. It, it requires daily sweeping, daily mopping, bi-monthly buffing and cleaning.
Mopping floors?
Yep. And the company that, the, the, the company that's the low bid did say they would bring in a, like a, almost like a, a dry mop or.
No, it's a machine that.
Machine that mops, so it's dry as soon as it's done versus the, just the wet mop.
Has the squeegee in the back.
Yep. And emptying trash receptacles daily and then there's some weekly wipe down the exterior surfaces, washing the inside receptacles, and dusting on a weekly basis. But I mean, it's obvious from their walkthrough and Minette's walkthrough that Fresh Start isn't performing these operations that, I mean, that's one of the things kind of brought to light is Minette was getting on about getting the quarterly waxing done and they never were able to get it done. So it hasn't been, the floors haven't been waxed in six months.
At first start.
Think like a year and a half.
My question, one of the things that I was thinking about was, one of the things you cited, especially why maybe local companies didn't bid this or things, or workforce retention or getting people to show up and things like that. This outfit out of Omaha, is it their intention? I mean, are we going to be hiring local people? Are they bringing people up? You know, how are they going to address that?
They told us they'd be hiring local people that they have.
That's frustrating. You know what I mean? If, if they're going to bring people up, I want to create more jobs, but I also understand if our local people are having difficulty and maybe an Omaha outfit can pay more. I don't know.
You know what? It seems to me, didn't we have, have a company that was out of town before Fresh Start and we had that, had those problems?
Well, I don't know. I think that, I think the company that was before them was an in-town company.
I know, excuse me, Spear Oval who was purchasing in the past.
Yeah, maybe it was security.
I know ISS, that might be who you're thinking of. I know they're a national company and they've, they've also bid the last two times and talked to their local manager and he felt like if he were to bid, it would have been substantially higher than he'd been in the past because he's having a hard time finding employees also. And I believe Fresh Start also is, no longer will be in business after this contract is done because they're having a hard time getting employees.
Yeah. Two things that are important to a successful Skywalk system, clean and secure. We struggle with both. But let's do it. I mean, I'm on, prices go up, but you got to pay, get help. They're going to do a good job for us.
One of my hopes is we can continue to look for option avenues, traffic in the Skywalk, you know, no downtown partners. We've talked about that in the different arts council and different options. You know, we talked about painting and lighting them up differently, you know, painting the underbelly of them and lighting that up. I mean, I've heard that from different, different people even in the community, just bringing more attention to it.
Hanging big banners on the outside of them.
Anyway.
Couldn't get a rise out of you. You had to throw that one. I didn't shut them. Couldn't get a rise out of you today to. The windows are a separate contract, aren't they?
Yes.
Yeah. Those are just as important, Pete. Yes, they are. Talk about customer service all the time, Mr. Gretkin. Absolutely. And it's nice to look outside and see people in downtown and good things happening. I mean, look at what Downtown Partners is doing for us. We want to be able to see it when we're walking in. All right, all right. We're going to vote here. Let's move her on. I'm going to, I'm going to call the three-minute rule on the council today. Roll here and get her.
Oh, boy, this is getting good.
Forgot to call Reagan up here. Get her thoughts on it. All right, we voted mayor. Passes four zero to one. I vote no. Seventeen's a presentation regarding the 2020 census and the development of an action plan.
Erin Brizina, planner with the city of Sioux City. I am here to introduce you our summer intern, David Vega. He's been with us since June 3rd, working approximately 20 hours a week. He's been conducting a lot of community-specific research out in the field, making connections that we can use going forward. And we've been very lucky to have his help this early in the process. I feel like we've got a really, really good jump on the outreach efforts for the 2020 census. So with that, here's David.
Hi, David.
Good afternoon.
Uh, sorry if I'm a little nervous. This is the first time I'm in front of the council, so.
We're real nice.
Just roll with me.
Don't you, you just, no problem.
So.
Here to listen.
Hello, my name is David Vega and I'm from Houston, Texas, and I have been a student at Iowa State for the last two years.
That is a plus right there, young man.
I'm currently majoring in business management and minoring in Latino studies. Last fall, I took a Latino studies class and where an opportunity was presented to me, an internship, an internship where I could learn more about Latino communities here in Iowa. The internship consisted of two parts. One during the spring semester where I was asked to help Perry Iowa with their census efforts and I was able to meet with the city administrator and local leaders to start to establish a complete count committee. My internship this summer was in part here with the city of Sioux City and in part with Iowa State Outreach and Extension Office located on south of Sioux City. I, I've had the pleasure of working here in Sioux, here in the city hall of Sioux City under Ms. Erin Brizina and in an effort to learn more about the city and the Latino community here. I had been asked to help with researching information about the census, meeting with people who are willing and able to improve messaging, getting to know local leaders in the community, creating an action plan for the 2020 census and overall helping improve the Latino participation in this upcoming census. Some of the, one of, one of multiple reasons the census is important is because it helps with the number of representation, it helps with the number of representatives in each state. It also helps redrawing the congressional and state legislative districts, school districts and voting precincts. It also helps enforce voting rights and civil rights legislation. It distributes federal dollars to states, helps planning decisions of federal government, local government, businesses and nonprofits. The, the use of data I decided to focus on was how it distributes federal dollars to the state and I'm here today to talk about how it does affect not only nationwide, but statewide and specifically Sioux City. And that's what part of my internship was, to learn more about Sioux City and how it affects local people here and the organization it, it might have a negative or positive effect on. Now, according to George Washington State's Counting for Dollars, a study conducted to see how the undercounting of the census would affect how the US distributes federal dollars to the 16 largest federal assistance programs. The state of Iowa received just about a little over $5.3 billion from census data information and this allocated to about $1,699 per capita, which means, what that means is that if each person is worth the same amount in federal funding, federal funding, each person will count for about $1,699. The reality is not each person is worth the same amount of money in federal funding. Factors such as income, race, education, sex, age, all play a factor in determining how much a person is worth in federal funding. Now, when looking at Sioux City, in 2010, it had a population of about 82,684 people and a Hispanic population of about 13,598 people or 16.4% of the population. That, that would account for about $140 million in federal funding if each person was worth about the same at the dollar amount of $1,699. So in 2017, the census estimates said that the population for Sioux City was about the same at 82,568 and these are just estimates, estimates, but some people feel like the 2010 census was wrong and that these estimate, the estimates based off the 2010 census might be incorrect and that might be due to the undercounting that a lot of people felt happened in 2010. And according to the 2017 estimates, the Hispanic population also grew to 15,562 people, a 4% increase in just the Latino population and, and made it now the Latino population account for 18.8% of the population. And the reason I am focusing on Latinos specifically was because of the internship and it's Latin, it's a Latino studies internship, so they felt I should go to cities in Iowa that had a large Latino population. Perry was about a third percent, well, 30% of its population was Latino. Perry's a smaller town. It's about 10 times smaller, close to 8,000 people. And here in Sioux City, Latinos make up about almost a fifth of the population, so they felt that Sioux City would be a great place for me to learn more about Latinos that came and live in Iowa. So, so why does it matter to the Latino community? Well, a huge number of Latinos in the community are the ones who use these federally funded assistance programs such as Title I grants to local education agencies. In 2014 through the 2015 school year, Title I served more than 24 million children and that's about 30, oh, and about 34% of which were Latinos. For special education grants, 1.3 million infants and toddlers will help through federal funding. Head Start program had about 30%, 37% of its participants be Hispanic and that's about 340,000 kids. And this is nationwide, so looking at it in Sioux City, it would be a smaller percent, but it would still be a good amount of people that use these services. Now, looking into the 2020 census, there's a lot of reasons why Latinos might not want to participate. The language barrier seems to be one of the main ones as, sorry. As in Sioux City, 44.1% of Hispanics are estimated to know English less than very well. That means when reaching out to the Latino population, it might be harder through messaging as they might not be able to read some of the messaging we put out or be able to understand the messaging we want to give out or even the message in general. Then there's also education where in the US, 60% of the Hispanics only have a high educate, high school degree or higher or did not complete high school at all, while in Sioux City, it's only 49.6% of the Hispanic Latinos have a high school degree or higher. Now, most of this, these statistics come from the 2010 census, which if it was undercounted, it means there could be a variety of inconsistencies and poverty level, poverty level, levels seem to also be a concern as about 25.8% of Hispanics in Sioux City live below the poverty line, which according to studies, this makes it harder to enumerate them. Immigrant status is also one of the huge concerns among Latinos. While in Sioux City, it is estimated that 71% of Hispanics are foreign-born. Now, whether that means they're undocumented or not, we are not sure as the census has not conducted a survey with the, with a citizenship question or a document question before. And so we do, but we do understand that because of recent news and recent, I want to say narratives around the census, it has scared some people into not wanting to participate in the census. And as you can tell, $1,699 per person adds up to a lot of people, a lot of dollars in funding over 10 years. If a family of five decided not to participate, that would be $8,500 about and over 10 years, that's $85,000 and that's just from one family of five. And it's, if that trickles up to too many people, that is a lot of federal funding that the city loses out on. So what are we doing to combat this is we've reached out to Latino-owned businesses for support. I've gone out into the community and asked known Latino businesses to see if they're willing to put up posters and say the message that the census is important and why the census is important. We have also talked to Latino community, the Latino community to see why they think the, what, what they think about the census and how to approach it. We are also trying to work with organizations such as Maria Trilia to coordinate with. We are also trying to work with organizations such as Mayor Traylor to coordinate with our outreach efforts. Mayor Traylor's a well-known support here in, here in Sioux City, and not only helps with Latinos, but it also helps with other minority immigrants that are coming in, both East African and, I think, West African and Asian communities. We are also trying to coordinate with the schools to see how we can reach out to families. During 2010, we tried reaching, well, Sioux City tried reaching out with schools. We hope to continue that and improve on that and hopefully reach out to families a whole lot more efficiently this year. We have also started to make a complete count committee in efforts to address future concerns. And what a complete count committee is, it's, it's a committee formed of community leaders, city officials and other role models in the community to, to help coordinate efforts and delegate responsibilities on how we, how to reach out to the Latino community and other minority communities as they are less likely to be the ones who participate. And what the committee is hoping to do is to reach, to meet before the end of the month to try to see what interest people would have into being a part of the committee, what we're trying to achieve and how we can achieve it. We also hope, hope to coordinate our efforts with other complete count committees such as Sioux City's Complete Count Committee. As although two separate cities in two different states, they both share a lot of the population and community leaders. So if we advertise here, not only will our counts probably go up, but South Sioux Cities and vice versa. If South Sioux City has, has a lot of the Latino churches that people in Sioux City use, so if we advertise there, we, we get the benefits of it too. So we are also working with companies and schools to reach out to certain parts of the community to do this. To do this, we had to see which parts of Sioux City needed the most attention. Thankfully, the Census Bureau has an application that allows us to see which areas in the city are anticipated not to participate in this upcoming census. This is, the application is called Rome, it's the Response Outreach Area Mapper, and it uses previous census information to determine what parts of the city are less likely to participate. And when we look at Sioux City, we can see that downtown and the areas around downtown are the ones less likely to participate. The darker blue it is, the more or less likely it is to participate with, I believe downtown, downtown has like, I think, thirty-three point one percent of likely not to participate. And that's, that's, it's, the way it's distributed, it's by census tracts and not by zip codes, so it's certain districts determined by the census to see whether or not anyone is going to participate.
Can I stop you there for a second, Erin? Is this a little shocking? I mean, because I don't think, you know, the highly concentrated populations, especially of minorities or Hispanics, would be in the downtown areas. Is that just a problem, they're not turning it in?
Census tract, now that's not necessarily downtown, even though it can be by downtown. I mean, it goes by census tracts, which part of that can be in the downtown, part of it can be in the mid-city area.
The area that you see in the dark blue, which has the lowest response rates, that is one census tract. And I, with this Rome application, you can also drill it down to the census block, which I found to be pretty helpful. So we know exactly where the low response rates have been in the past. So we will just be able, using this application. We will be able to spell what businesses, what churches, things like that, that we can, you know, center some outreach efforts into.
Does the census take or have to take the information, or can you go out and take, for instance?
It does have to be a census worker, because they're hired by the federal government.
Can you send people with them?
Yes, yes. I can't physically take somebody's census unless I become a census worker.
Right.
But they can have advocates.
But they can have, yes.
Somebody that's fluent in Spanish.
Yes.
We need to send with that census worker to make sure that there's not a communication.
Right. And as a side note, the census is going to be distributed a little differently this year. There's a huge effort to do online responses. There will be an online option, you have a, an identifier that you get in the mail that allows you to fill out your census online. Once that unique identifier has been used, it's no longer, you know, eligible. So, you know, we'd like to do some partnerships with the school, with the library, things like that, to get response rates up in some of these areas that might be really helpful, especially with bilingual communities.
Sorry, David, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Sorry, no, it's perfectly fine. As my internship comes to an end, I will be leaving behind an action plan that could be used to see potential dates and events related to the census. This will help coordinate and more efficiently use whatever resources the city seems necessary to reach out to the communities. And this is, I've been working on this since June third, and I've gone to know a little bit about the Latino community here in Sioux City and about Sioux City in general. I feel like it's a very diverse place, more diverse than I initially thought. As I am from Texas and from Houston, Texas, a bigger and larger city where diversity is just all around me. When I first came to Iowa, I had no idea pockets of Iowa had this much diversity. So it's been very interesting and very eye-opening to see this. And that's my presentation.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Lot of good information.
I have a couple of questions. Dave, what do, he did a nice job of spelling out what government programs are, but we get direct money from gas tax. How much is that per person?
It's about a hundred and twenty-one dollars, give or take fifty cents depending on the year.
And we get direct community block grants based upon population. And how much is that? Let's say you miss five percent of your population, it's a hundred and thirty, forty thousand dollars at least. Right? I have a reason for asking this, I'm.
And just to add too, that the transit operating grant is based on population and population density both.
Here's the problem for me, I know they missed in the last count. There's, should not be any question. And the problem with that is then your database for the next ten years is built on that bad count. So you're going to live with a bad census for ten years. We ought to seriously consider people of different ethnics as interns to work with these census workers to make sure that people are not afraid to fill that questionnaire out, because there's going to be a lot of resistance to that. Not taking on the administration, not doing that. But there's going to be resistance right now for our minority populations, I don't care if they're Hispanics or others. They don't answer the door the same way you and I do. So if they see a person of color at that door, they're more, going to be more likely to open that door. And if you miss forty-one hundred people, that's a lot of money that walks out of this. And the problem is that, that, that data is built for the next ten years. So as they inflate that data, thinking that we grew the, say, let's say we could get to eighty-six hundred. Then they're going to base that, you're going to grow five or six percent the next ten years. And if you don't build that data, we're going to be just like we are here. That's why I said there were communities in 2015 doing half-marked census and the city of Clive or West Des Moines scored huge on paying five hundred thousand dollars to do their own census. It was, they're, they paid for that over the last five years of what they got back in federal money and state money, so.
So what'd they do? Explain.
That you can do your own census, you have to wait five years. But one of those cities did a half census, paid for it themselves, because they knew their state gas tax, their, their transit money, all that was going to go up. And I, I think if we don't, if we don't have interns out there from the different minority communities, working with these guys, we're going to, we're going to be in trouble. I mean, if you have people that are known in the Hispanic community, they're willing to be an intern and we pay them, you will, you will come out ahead on this census.
Pay for them and more.
Pay for the interns and more, exactly. So I hope we would consider that.
I would be very much in favor, because I'm guessing, David, you have to go back to Iowa State, right?
Yes.
So I'm sure that that's going to be coming to an end. But I mean, and I don't know if that's Erin or if it's the city manager or what, but I, I'm a big fan of intern programs and I agree wholeheartedly with the mayor. I mean, I've been working with One Sula and other initiatives as well that are trying to engage those minority populations. I think, to the mayor's point, I mean, this is a dollars and cents, right? It's a matter of making sure that everyone is counted, because the city benefits so much from having that count and then can turn around and use those services to serve that population. You know what I mean? And so it's not just saying, oh no, we need to have a count so that we can have all this money. It's no, it's services that would benefit the entire population, including the minority groups. And so I, I agree wholeheartedly with you, Mayor. I don't know if there's, if we want to talk about options down the road for what we can do, try to be creative, because.
Well, we gotta, we gotta get a game plan here real fast, because 2020's not very far away. There are already census workers working in this area.
And the other thing, the other thing about that is if it was Clive or others, I would guarantee, or not guarantee, I'm not going to say that, but I would be willing to bet that we have a higher minority population than those communities as well. And so if they, no, you don't think so, maybe?
I know that their minority population has grown quite a bit over the years, especially in the West Des Moines suburb. Clive, I'm not sure.
And so I just wonder, you know what I mean, if they saw that type of return on investment, if we could do the same.
Well, it wasn't all, not only, they had grown as well, so don't, don't misunderstand me. It wasn't just minority population in their.
But overall.
It was because they grew overall, and they could justify five hundred thousand dollars was the number I heard, because of what they were going to get back. Because again, then that sets the next five years in their case. Here's what we think you grew, because you grew so much the previous years. And you cannot afford to miss people on account. It costs you a lot of money. Okay, thank you.
Well, and I actually have some questions for David specifically. So what was your take? I mean, if you had public outreach and had these conversations with businesses and members of our community, I mean, what was your take? How did they feel? Did they know much about it, care? Were they engaged with it?
Some people didn't, well, since the last one occurred about ten years ago, some people don't even remember filling it out or whether or not they did fill it out. A lot of the Latino people I did talk to said the, the main thing they knew about it was from the news and from the recent news that was with it. So informing them about what it was and why it was important was a bit, like, I can only inform one person and that person can only inform so many people. So I felt like outreach-wise, it's as, it's getting it as much as possible, because I think that's the main thing, that's the challenge, is awareness. If people knew how much this mattered and how much it affected them personally, because that's main, the main reason why people do things is if, affects them personally. Is, if they knew it affected how much money they get on WIC or their SNAP, SNAP support or whatever they use, if, if they knew it affected them that way, they might be more willing to fill it out as well. One of the things that did happen in 2010, one particular instance, I was talking to, this lady was, one of the census workers had asked about two houses had knocked on them, but he, he could not get the message across of why he was there or why, or what he needed from them. And when he finally knocked on this particular lady's door, she was able to talk English, so she completely understood he was there for the census. And he was just asking, have you completed it? Have, if you haven't, would you want to complete it right now? And he had said he couldn't talk to the other houses because they didn't understand English. And luckily for him, this particular lady's neighbor was her sister-in-law, so she just explained it to her. But it's definitely one of those things where I could see how the message doesn't reach most people talking to people, because it's like, if someone knocks on your door and you don't understand what they're saying, you're not going to get what they're trying to get you to do or why it's important.
Let alone fill out paperwork or something like that.
That was my take, and I feel like there's a lot of community leaders here that understand the importance of the census. As I have gotten people to agree on the complete count committee and to come at least to one of the meetings, they, they all see the importance if they, and they've all come up with great ideas on how we could reach out to the community. Sula and Health Department has a lot of ideas of how we could use their facilities to reach out to people who are using the services and explain to them how, how it affects them. Also, the schools have been really, really helpful, which was nice and surprising, they're more than, they said they were willing to help us out. So I feel talking, getting the message out to the youth might empower them as they feel important, as they are counted and they can tell their parents that they are counted and get them to participate.
I think you're exactly right, David.
The key is to go to them.
The key is, is to let them know why we're doing this.
Exactly.
Right.
And, and not be scared or suspicious or all of the stuff you read about and hear about. I, I like your, I think you're exactly on point. You tell them, you tell everybody, I mean, you gotta even tell, you gotta tell the whole community what, what we're trying to do and what we're trying to accomplish with the census. So you're just right on point with that. And it'll take away that, you know, being afraid, being scared and not knowing what's really going on here. Is there a hidden agenda type thing? You know what I'm?
Yes, sir. And to go on to that, I feel like it's important to have community leaders to represent whoever, whoever the people is filling out. For my instance, Latino people, if there's a Latino community member who is willing to say how important it is, it's way more beneficial than if someone who isn't in their race or someone who's, who seems to be empowered. Like, it's different coming from someone who looks like you and who can talk like you and who's a part of your community than it is from someone who might be a little disassociated with that community.
Some of it's common sense, isn't it, David?
Yes.
Thank you for the good job, we appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
That concludes the regular agenda. We will go to citizen concerns. Are there any citizens that want to be heard? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address and tell us what you want to talk about.
Dwayne Frawl, thirteen oh four Grove Drive.
I'm sorry, what was your, what was your name? I missed his name. Can you get your name again, please? Name and address again, please.
Dwayne Frawl. F R A V L.
Yep. And address?
Thirteen oh four Grove Drive.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to say something before you say something about the, about the time involved. This is a sizable.
Go ahead.
July of last year, first or second of July, I called about these potholes. That's over a year, year ago. The people showed up to patch them about two weeks, which I think is fantastic. They took a look and they drove on to the, they just left. So I called and the guy was real polite. He said, sure, I, we'll have them come back. Well, then I had a stroke and I was laid up for about three or four months. And I never thought about it during the winter. Well, then it happened again, and I've called twice since, and, and I get very good, nice conversation, but that's all. Conversation doesn't fix that. I go to back out, you can see the depth I've measured out, deep the hole is. Hole, there's five of them, by the way, so it's not just one. My wife is not, she's very fragile. And so I'm asking you, what do I do next?
What you do is, they have your address and I'm sure Mr. Carney wrote it down, and I'm sure Mr. Carney's going to figure out how to get that fixed real fast for you, so.
Okay.
Stand out front tomorrow and see what, or the next day, and we'll see if we can get it done, okay? Appreciate you coming.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Anyone else be heard?
This one, sir?
Either one, don't.
Either.
I'm a talky api, me chazekei, Michael, Patrick Wambidi Gadeska O'Connor. I hunt one o' yate in Mataha, chantay washte yuhanape chiusapi. This is the way we usually introduce ourselves in Dakota language and Dakota way. So what I said was, my name is Michael O'Connor, my legal name is Michael Patrick Wambidi Gadeska O'Connor. I live at two seventeen nineteenth street here in Sioux City. I've been a resident, time flies, I stayed almost all my life, give or take, off reservation, on reservation, with the Yankton Sioux Tribe of South Dakota. And so today, I'm just going to read something off of Facebook. A group of local Native Americans and myself met on July first. And I'll just read to you the Facebook event that I put out, and then I'll take it, take it from there, and I appreciate the fact that you're all listening. Everyone is invited, including our non-native relatives, on July first, two thousand and nineteen, in the late afternoon, early evening, myself and other concerned members of our community will be participating in the following. But please allow me to explain something that you may. But please allow me to explain something that you may, that you must know about a traditional Native American tactic of demonstrating bravery. You see, Native people had a somewhat different view of warfare, one of which is that killing should only take place when absolutely necessary. It was in fact more brave to not kill. One of the ways a young warrior to demonstrate his bravery and a young up and coming warrior, uh, to demonstrate his bravery was to quote unquote count coup on an enemy. In those days when a young man was of age, he was quite adept at that age with his surroundings. As a result of his training, he was very aware how to determine the weather, oncoming storms, et cetera. He had learned how to be an expert hunter, scout, able to, able to track game, able to stay alive in the harshest of conditions. He was able to know what trees and plants could be used for medicine and for food when game was scarce. He was a skilled weapon maker by that age and horseman. He knew the territory of his people so well, you could plop him down blindfolded in the middle of nowhere and he would find his way back. Just by watching the sky, paying attention to the animals, the winds, he would always be able to find his way home. He had to be able to remain in still silence and, uh, and, uh, but, and, and so that way and as, as a precautionary, uh, and as a show of strength. So to be able to sneak up on a warrior was a big deal. It meant the difference between life and death. But anybody could shoot and kill from a distance. So counting coup meant sneaking up on an enemy warrior who was trained this way and using a coup stick, which was basically a wooden stick to strike an unsuspecting enemy and then to make an escape without being hurt or even killed was considered a great, allowing enemy to sneak up on you was a great insult to one's skill set as a protector of the people. And so this brings me to July first, not two thousand and nineteen. As a symbolic act, I, Michael O'Wamby Godeska O'Connor, counted coup on the brass rail bar, which is located on six and Granby Street, directly across the street from the Sioux City Police Department. I'm going to do this to demonstrate our resolve as Native people and that we find it unacceptable, unacceptable, excuse me, that our Native American relatives are victimized by a system that turns the other way. Everyone knows that the brass rail is not somewhere where you go. It is not a family friendly place because it caters to the most vulnerable alcoholics, many of which are tribal people. Many of us already know that Native Americans make up only two percent of Woodbury County population, but annually make up to almost fifty percent of all intoxicated related arrests, a shockingly disproportionate rate. The Native community has been in crises and dive bars like the brass rail are allowed to profit from the misery and alcohol dependence of our people. They have made it a routine to serve already intoxicated citizens to the point of dangerous levels of drunkenness and this is not okay. Everyone knows this, but nothing is done. There is a brass rail in every community. How ironic that this bar sits only feet in distance from the police department, feet from the federal building and one block from city hall. I have heard that the small convenience store that sits right next to the brass rail even allows people to quote unquote run a tab on alcohol. So on July first, this all changes. A group of us will begin by praying at the river and walking into the city. We will stop one time at the correctional facility on Fifth Street and Water and we will offer up prayer. We then went to the brass rail bar where I counted coup on the brass rail as a symbolic gesture to identify this place as the enemy of the people. We then prayed there and, uh, sang prayer songs and we also did so as well at the police department and at the, uh, city hall. And then the, uh, after that, we, um, at the federal building. We also know that the brass rail isn't the only place that does this. There are local convenience stores like Select Mark, Sam's Mini Mark, Come and Go, where Pan, Native American people panhandle every day. We expected this to be covered on a national level, which it was. Uh, if you go to the website, Indians dot com, which is a national Native American news outlet, there was some coverage there as well as a YouTube video. And so I just wanna quote, uh, one of our, uh, may rest him in peace, Mr. Frank Lemire. Uh, nothing changes until people are made to feel uncomfortable. And so I myself, we, we did do that on July first and on July second, I went around to area businesses surrounding, uh, the brass rail bar. And some of the things that were said were our quote unquote, let me just find this, uh, from the children's pad. They, they know that that is not somewhere where you want to go in regard to, uh, uh, in regard to the brass rail. Because everybody knows this, it's considered an eyesore. People get nervous by walking by it on their way to the local restaurant, the Al, Al, Algueros. Uh, one is I believe that she was talking about. And once in a while, they see people that are obviously intoxicated and Native American that we perceive as coming from that area. And having been growing up in Sioux City and having drank in the brass rail when I was fifteen years old, I don't drink anymore. But that's, it, it's, it seems to be that everybody knows this. The tattoo place right next to the brass rail has been there for twenty years and they are concerned and they feel like it is bad for business. She, uh, let's see, the, let me go on to the next. Okay, the abstract place, he has, he says he's got, he's known it, he's known it, he's been there for forty years and he feels like the gal who owns the brass rail gets away with all this. He says he's got pictures of people lying around and drunk and passed out. I know that the, that the karate place, the taekwondo place, they even put up a little gate about this big because that's where people would go and pass out in the back in the alley. I know because of my office was located right down by there. I know exactly where people pass out at even to this day in the bushes. They pass out down Perry Creek when it's, uh, hot like this because of the, because of the weather.
Michael, I, I'm gonna stop you there.
Sure.
Second, what's the point that you're trying to make? Do you want us to do something?
Yes, yes. My point is to bring that to your awareness. Romantics had, were very concerned, uh, um, uh, staff at the taco place, um. So that, that general area and I think, I don't even live there, but I think we all know that the brass rail, if you're paying attention.
Yeah, we are, but the problem is they, in Iowa, you're maybe bring pressure to the business owner, but we don't have the luxury of doing away with the liquor license.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Not like out in White Clay or White River, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we vote, have voted liquor licenses out for things like that and the state just gives it to them the next month, so it's.
What, what I'm concerned about is what I see i- is that people that are already intoxicated are being served. And where do they go? They go to the places that I have already talked about. They, they then go and pass out.
Mayor and council, I will talk to our police chief to see if we could have a directed effort, uh, towards reducing or eliminating that.
I wouldn't disagree, I just, it'll be interesting.
And, and, and you know that the, the city of Omaha has, has formed a Native, Native American Advisory Committee. Uh, I don't know if they're paid, but I, I'd certainly be willing to serve as a volunteer. And I know others that are Native American would, would consider that as well.
Michael, what other action steps have you seen other communities take? Just give me an idea of maybe what your thoughts are as far as what specific steps we could be looking at, whether, whether it's allowed or not. That's, we can decide that and look at the, what the law.
You know, I'm not so, I'm.
Anything?
Sioux City is obviously unique. And so I think this situation is, I mean, Sioux Falls has a bar called the Something Feather. So, uh, they target their high level of Native Americans, but as far as Iowa goes, Sioux City is in that unique position because of the, because of the high rate of our Native Americans in our population. Just go to Cook Park right now, there's a pattern that they do. They go out and they get drunk, then they go to the soup kitchens and then they find the next place where they can pass out. But in the meantime, if they have money, they're getting their, their high liquor content, cans of beer. And there's been coverage of this before in the past and I've been a part of that.
So Michael, in Sioux Falls, you're saying there, there is not an issue there or there is?
I would suspect that there would be an issue, yes, yes. What makes, uh, Sioux City more distinct is the local locality to the reserve, to the different reservations.
Okay, thank you.
And I, you know, I had been in contact with, uh, Rex, uh, from the chiefs, uh, from the, the chief of the police department. And I felt scolded that I was doing this because of the ongoing efforts. As much as I appreciate those efforts and I've been going on with Hope Street of Sula Land and, and I appreciate those efforts, but this is a whole nother issue and it seems to be that everybody knows it. And it really, what it comes down to is law enforcement and, and enforcing the, enforcing the liquor law. I, I don't want brass rail to be out of business, but it's clearly an issue, particularly to our downtown businesses and particularly to the people who are alcoholics because they know they can go to the brass rail and drink. And people are gonna always argue, well, it's their choice. Well, no, it's not because, well, I'm an ex-counselor from drugs and alcohol, so my dad, my data, my information might be a little bit off. But an alcoholic functions from the, from the, uh, uh, older part of the brain, the amygdala, those areas in the form of survival. So him, to him, drinking is survival. The, the part, the frontal cortex, the executive part of the brain, the one that makes the decisions is, is shut off and he's functioning from the amygdala. So basically, choice is, isn't an issue. It comes down to those, those, those businesses.
Let's, let's give Bob a chance to work with the chief and see what we can do.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. And the chief has my, uh, my email as well, so I'm willing to help. Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Michael.
Thanks, thanks.
Anyone else be heard today? Seeing none, Pete?
Um, I was gonna ask about, uh, the grass and weeds on the right away on Floyd Boulevard. Primarily from about the two thousand block to the twenty-five hundred, maybe twenty-six hundred block on the east side of the street. The weeds are, are the grass is high off the, uh, in the right away and the weeds ten feet behind are even higher. Is that the railroad that?
Yes, yep. We can send inspections out there though.
Yeah, can we ask them to take a look, cause it's, it's really unsightly.
Yes, we will do that.
Thank you. And then, um, Michael mentioned, uh, Hope Street of Sula Land, uh, if you'd pass that down to the members. Uh, last week I had an opportunity to talk to Matt Omen about, did everybody get, you get a copy? About, um, or you got an extra one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There it is, okay. Um, about the, um, last, he wanted to bring counsel up to date and I told him I would share it with you about the last board meeting, which was held last Monday evening. And, uh, the big news is that the, uh, Hope Street of Sula Land is open now. They are full, they have ten beds to help with detox and, uh, a lot of good things are happening. I won't, uh, read all of this to you. If you'd take a look at it, uh, Matt was just hoping that we would, uh, keep, uh, he wanted to keep us informed and what he wants to do is, I think, schedule another meeting. But this will bring you up to date on the Hope Street project. I think we all had some involvement, uh, in the meeting a couple of months ago and, and it's really off to a great start. Uh, the only problem is there are only ten beds, but now they're full. And, um, as long as they continue towards, uh, detox and maybe, uh, a program after that. Uh, and they are going to meetings, uh, regularly and, uh, Matt thinks they're off to a great start. And as you know, uh, it lists the board members, many of whom, if not all of them, you will know and who are very active. So I told him, again, I'd share with all of you and, and that's what I wanted to do, just kind of bring you up to date and get ready. Let you know there'll probably be a meeting in the next month or two to talk more about, uh, what can be done to help with the problems Michael was talking about. So I appreciate all the work that, uh, Matt, who is the Executive Director of Ship, uh, Sula and Human Investment Partners, uh, Partnership, uh, is doing a great job and, and he's getting a lot of help from the private sector. Uh, and then last but not least, uh, I, I got the, um, informational memo from Matt Salvatore on the Cone Park and, and you may or may not have seen it yet because it came out late, I think just before we came. But, uh, revenue increased in the second season at Cone Park, attendance increased. Expenses, uh, went up a little bit, but they're still saving money. They hope to save even more next year because they're gonna undertake the snowmaking process themselves. That could save them as much as twenty thousand dollars. But I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, Matt and, and.
John.
John down there and, and, and everybody who has helped, uh, maintain that. It's become a great amenity and it looks like it's just gonna go, uh, uh, continue to grow and to be bigger and better all the time.
It's a great amenity, but if you remember, a year ago, we were told, the reason they lost money was because of startup costs and they didn't foresee that happening this year. And that's the problem with government. Now we've accepted that loss and I'm not accepting that. I think we need to challenge our staff because they were, they, they're the ones that said the reason we lost was all these startup costs. Well, they don't have them anymore, so their dollar loss was very similar to the year before. Even though their revenue went up, their expenses went up accordingly.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, I can address that. Uh, one change that did happen over the past year is we did hire a full-time employee to, uh, oversee Cone Park. Uh, in looking at how that person's cost accounted for, they spent approximately fifty percent of their time on recreation programs. So we'll be working with finance to make sure that where they're working is where they're being paid from.
Just cook those numbers around and make it look like. Yeah, I know how that.
No, but I, but Matt is in tune with trying to cut costs. And I think with this, the staff being able to do the, the snow removal or, or.
Yeah.
Snow making.
We're also, we're also looking at increased summer pro, revenue producing summer program that we did not have. And lodge rental and other. Correct, yes. I, I see a lot, a lot more good than bad. I agree with the mayor, I want it to at least be even or you know what I mean? Same way to make it profitable. And I, I reached out to John and Matt about that, that I see some of the new programming, they're doing different things to try to offset that cost. But continuing to put the foot down to the gas on that, I think is good.
That's it, thank you.
Alex, uplifting? Any songs to sing or?
I mean, maybe, no, I, no, I was gonna sing a song for you guys.
No, you weren't, what's the story today?
Kidding. So, uh, one thing that I just wanted to bring to your attention, I did email all members of council about this. Um, but the Tyson internship program, we last heard about this or talked about it at the Joint Human Rights Commission, um, where we had a number of, a number of interns from all over the region go to the various nonprofits and serve. Yeah, Tyson, well, and the reason they're called the Tyson Interns, interns is because Tyson Foods funds the program. Um, it's a great program, great partnership with the different schools as well as the students. Uh, I would encourage you to look at where they're placed and who those individuals are and the attachment. And then it is on Friday from eleven to one. So they'll all have a poster presentation. It's Morningside College, Wyker, October. If you can be there, I think that'd be great, um, just to hear what they were doing. Anyone in the audience is open to the public as well. So if you want to hear what some of these interns are doing, it's pretty powerful work, um, and really just what they're able to accomplish over a summer.
I would love to, but I'll be golfing in the Bulldog Open for the concordia.
Oh, in the Bulldog Open.
Oh.
It, will this be, you'll be defending your fifteenth consecutive?
We were second last.
Oh, okay.
And the team I have this year, we won't be in the money, but go ahead. I can only hope to win a raffle. I won the TV and then gave it back to the girls' basketball team so they could do films, so.
Oh, great.
Third spot, isn't it? Third place is good, isn't it? No.
If you're eating donuts.
I forgot about second. I forgot about second place.
That's all I got.
Mr. Moore?
Nothing further, mayor.
I move adjourned.
Second?
You did send out an email.
Water.
Today?
Capron.
Eli.
Redken.
Okay.
Aye.
Moore.
I get you on it too.
God.
Aye.
Let me take this. And yeah, I need-
Go Cyclones, David. Get that football team going now.